It is nine o'clock, it is almost clock, as I say so. So we shall begin. At some point we need to... I don't know what's...
There's different parts.
That not work? Okay, today is Monday, June the 11th, 2018, and I call Potter County District Court Board. Today we have D.B. Baloo from St. Andrews who will do our identification, so if you'll come forward and stand for that.
Let us pray. Divine Creator, Source of all wisdom and grace, we invite your presence at this meeting here today. Give to these elected officials and staff with patience, integrity, compassion, and knowledge to serve in the best interest of all citizens of Potter County as they carry out the agenda set out before them this morning. May each of us remember before you all the poor and neglected persons whom it would be easy for us to forget, knowing that every one of us is inextricably connected to one another through our human minds. We give you thanks for the many blessings and freedoms we enjoy as your people in this community and in the wider community of this nation. We offer these prayers to you as our ultimate authority. Amen.
Amen. I am the official candidate of the United States of America, a particular republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am on the Texas side. I represent the citizens of the state of Texas. I want to say, under God, one indivisible.
The first thing on the agenda is the recognition of the minutes from May 29th, 2018. District Court Board, there's no... So recognize two vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county officers office during the May 29th, 2018 through June 6th, 2018. We have an amendment here to add to it. A table for collections, if you'd like to go up. An amount of $9,946.73, which in addition to the regular vouchers, check numbers... Check numbers 1-806-73 through 1-808-96, NY Transfers 1-082 through 1-088. With a total amount of I make a motion that we accept the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Motion second on favor of the right hand. Number five. Thank you. Insurance report, recognize insurance fund report. There's nothing unusual. Thank you. Tax office to consider and act upon tax refund for overpayment of taxes. Carrie, is this still going on?
It's Jim.
Is what we don't normally have this time of year?
I don't think so. This is like, as they close on the parking, and Mr. Barrie has a check. They did pay him.
All right, so it's just the usual. Okay.
Move where you approve the refund for overpayment of taxes. Second.
Motion in a second on favor of the right hand. Thank you. Number five, can handle auto burglary and theft unit to consider and act upon the resolution for the grant request for the auto burglary and theft prevention authority and to designate the required grant officials. Great, we're here, let me see you again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's that time again to review for only the second year of the grant. On our second year, the original grant gets carried within two blocks. So it's the second year. We've got the members of the active year. Okay. To enable the interviews for folks to...
I'm sorry.
Yeah? Not lieutenant anymore. Just regular.
Patrick McGreen, Sergeant with the Rango County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Mitch Matthews, Admiral Police Department. Sergeant Michael Flatford, Admiral Police Department. Sergeant Jimmy Henson, Potter County Sheriff's Office. And Sergeant Richard Ray with Admiral Police Department.
It's just a few of them. I can tell you, which are good reason to be very proud of what they're doing up here. We're doing it. Old man. An exponential amount of more cases than, say, for example, Woburn County. And Woburn County gets more money than we do. That sort of thing. I've got numerous letters about the act two from some of the sheriffs out, the chief of police is out in around the other counties that they're covering. Commending them for the contacts that they make with them and the work that they've done for them. A lot of stuff winds up, out running counties winds up in Amarillo. And they've been very successful in getting some of those things back. Like the cattle feeders, they've got stolen off, it was on the truck. They wind up finding the truck and the cattle feeder, two different spots here in Amarillo. Things like that. The sheriffs in the outline area. I haven't heard them complain about a county at all. Or sign people's warrants putting on. It's not first to resume the decision.
So question to the matter of, it seems like we're getting more influx of cases such as, even the grandparents of Woburn County. So why would they be giving you more money than...
Good question, and I do not know the answer. Here's what happens is they, Woburn Police Department isn't a great part of that unit. But somehow they're counting the Woburn feeding cases. For them, what they officially, it actually worked was, what was it, last year, 2015?
They usually investigate about 200 cases. Last year we did over 1,400. And we recovered over $6 million worth of stolen vehicles here.
So they haven't been lobbying, I think that we do. They weren't, they were...
They've been existence for much longer than we have. They've been one of the fixtures of the program. And then we're not complaining about the 100 judicial district. To get to Carson County, which Woburn County, we had the service here, Woburn had Carson County. Let's drive through our jurisdiction to Carson County. So we're trying to work out with the previous director down there, he had agreed just to let us take the 100 judicial district. Carson, Don Lee, Paul, Chivers, Collinsburg. He retired, and the other guy wasn't so meaningful as he wanted to do that. And the other director was going to go back to the south and southeast to pick up the counties that way. They're not, they're no one's service. But we're doing really good. We've got state trailers. And I can't remember the exact numbers right now, but from 16 to 17, our theft numbers increased. And the reason they increased is it nearly, just nearly totally mirrors vehicles that increase having the keys in the car. And I can tell you, those kind of cases are accounting for 70% or more of our situation. Now the cars are sophisticated enough, you got, I don't know if you can hog turn it anymore. You know, because it's all electronic, now computer stuff comes on instead of the wires and the dash. So that's, that's a huge problem. And but it, between that, those two years, it was clear here, the amount they increased was the same statistic as keys left in the car. You know, I don't know, you know, we've been very vocal about taking keys out of your car, about taking keys out of the car and not quite, some folks felt like that the back in the day when they did the start of the, just like no drugs. And all that big idea. Some folks had a opinion that was advertising that. I don't know the answer to that, I don't know the answer to the question that. We've done innovative things, they came up with the ideas and got moved to the city water bills. Just to know, please, that you take your keys out of your car, that kind of stuff. Really innovative on the ways we've been trying to contact folks.
Carrie, will you help me with the grant distribution? How does that work with the positions and there's an interloper involved in it as well?
There is, we stay actually, it's about $362,000. Potter County contributes $48,100. City of Amarillo created a new position, I'm not exactly sure the total on that, but probably close to $120,000, $130,000. Yeah, we get a little pool, cash match, Randall County. And then both the DA's and Potter and Randall County attorney, sheriffs contribute $2,000. $2,000 out of their 40,000.
And then what is the grant cycle to this grant, I know this is the application to turn it in, but when does it run? Is it on our, aligning with our budget year? It's September. September.
It's all in the state. It's all in the state.
Yeah.
And that's why they do the, that's why they jump to the two, the state of the two units when they operate.
And who officially submits the grant on our behalf? I mean, I know Judge Sanders would potentially sign this resolution.
It's through the office.
Your office does it?
It is Potter County.
They're doing a lot more than just the county.
Okay, thank you.
Our sheriff's standing. Move if the protocol is presented.
I have a motion and a second on the liberation right hand. I'm sitting up. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Number six, record center to consider for approval. To purchase the shelving units for the record center at a cost of $3,960 to an amendment to increase the budget and the fund balance and the court records and the fund. Sandra, are you going to address this or somebody else?
Well, unless you just want to say okay. Okay, if this boils down to the fact that we have so many records that we get in and we don't get exactly that many people who are approving records for destruction, which we do regularly. But we just, we can't, of course, sit boxes on our because you don't ever know when there's going to be a leak, a flood, or whatever, so we've just reached the point that we have to have more storage for boxes, we're able to have 1,000 boxes. I don't remember the exact count at this time, but it's just something we have to do. And for all the departments at the county.
And Sandra, you, you mentioned those not signing off on the, the document to shred when it's appropriate, the appropriate time to shred. So is that a process thing that we can work on improving, or it just means the time hasn't lapsed? I know there's a time element, hasn't lapsed that the document is ready to be shredded?
Well, it's a rare thing that we give out a document that for them to approve for destruction that occasionally there might be something that they'd want to keep longer, which is fine, but we can keep our shelves emptier, more empty, if we had those approvals in quickly. In fact, they worked this weekend getting all the, the boxes ready for destruction for this week. And they come in usually on a Saturday to get it ready because they can't do it. Phone calls and the records they have to deliver and all that, so. And you would think it would have cut down the number of boxes with the all the people that are doing things paperless, but there's not really that many that can do that yet.
Oh, that was part of the, let's buy the technology, there will be less paper, right?
Well, and it will be eventually, but we, we're not there yet. And, and we have to protect these records.
So what do you think the biggest problem is with not being around to it? I mean, is it? Is it just, is it just taking the time that they don't have to go through the stuff and say, yeah, I can destroy it?
You said that's the department's duty to ask?
Actually, they do very well. There's some that just like you say, they depend on what the, the frozen they're worth to come when they get those in to approve them, they just really may not have the time to go through them one by one, but it would, I mean, and, and we, as soon as, as soon as we get a box that we can destroy, we insert in the place that we took the box out of, another box. We don't waste any space at all. So after we've had a shred, then the next box is go in the holes where they, they came out of. And that's the only way you can keep space available at all, so.
You have, you have room down, down there for more shelving?
Yes, we have not a lot of room left, but we did have room for, I think we ordered eight, so we figured out where we can put those. So.
For those of you that have been down there to look at that, you need to. It's amazing how much space we have for boxes. So moving forward, that, that could probably be some little issue for its space. And it also sounds like maybe they're dedicated up to eat, to adjust that for the trip.
Or we take a deep dive at the process and say, how can we really get to a point where we are using less paper, which is part of the cost savings to the taxpayers for all of the technology?
And there's, there are some records that are deep in the history of the county that, that will...
Well, sure, you don't protect those, yeah.
You'll want to keep and protect and...
Well, some you buy law, you have to.
Yeah, yeah, for a period of time ahead. But we send out usually once a month lists to all like a little one, once a month occasionally, but they're ready to really get the list to...
Sandra, do you see, see on that list that goes up to the front?
Um, I know she probably wouldn't want...
No, I just meant, it might be helpful to see how many. I mean, because the only alternative is exactly what you just said, Mr. So to get in front of, I mean, this is a shelf, a fairly, you know, nominal amount, but just getting in front of the discussion of more shelves, more space, a position. We don't start asking those questions now, unfortunately, I feel like the next time we see you, you're going to say, I can't keep going.
Was that an interest of strategic planning?
I don't know, but...
I don't think it was.
I'm not their mother, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to pat him on the head and tell him to agree with the judge.
But this is costing the taxpayers, so, I mean, that's ultimately where it comes from.
That's my main question, we get this stuff every month and we get it on our phone also. Why do we continue to do this? Do we have to?
So you'll know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at this whole act of stuff that we get on our phone.
That would be great if we could do packet list. Wouldn't it sound nice?
Well, if those are not one term, please don't go to you.
I was looking at we approve the purchase of shelf units for the record center at a cost of $3,960 with the amendment to the case.
Which funds, just for the...
For records, I just managed to...
For records, I didn't do this.
Second.
Okay, and the horse in the second on the favor of the right hand. Thank you, Sandra. Number seven, Potter County District Card to consider and approve replacing 200 chairs for the central jury room. Fund for repair replacement account.
Can I raise that?
Okay. I think I saw her out there. So you need 200 new chairs?
Yes.
Are the ones you have unstable? Or?
They are, many of them are torn, the backs are broken, they're stained. They're small. And they've been through since last night. So I, I just feel like for our jurors that sit in the jury room for hours, a more comfortable chair would be appropriate. And that's the issue, they are. We brought the issues, yes, yeah.
Is that pretty much the entire inventory, or is it just the percentage of... The entire inventory of the chairs?
Would you be... I'd say the entire inventory is...
Yes. So this is just kind of an average look as I go through, but there's like a hat that's, many of the backs are broken on our chairs back there. You can see the one by the color. And then just almost all of them are stained or worn. And they're very stained. And this is just throughout the whole. I have, I have a total of 160 of these right now. But I have some rollabout chairs too on those. The backs are stained. And that's going to be replacing some of these.
Are you going to get the kind that are just chairs, you're going to get little desks?
We brought a sample of what we want.
What other like...
We went through, and I know we have my first quote that I got, we compared three different manufacturers. One was Hon, which is what we usually get, but they were a lot more expensive. And so we, we went down there to office wise, and we actually sat in that, and it has like a little spring in the back. And it just adjusts to your height, width, whatever. And it's up to 300 pounds, and this is by far the best one. And the manufacturer gave us a larger discount if we bought three more chairs. It was a thousand dollars last month, we got three more chairs. And half of them, we are going to have arms. And then some we are not going to have arms for those people that need them.
What about a desktop?
Mary, go ahead. I'm sorry. We don't need those basically anymore because the jury forms are filled out either online or through the mail. And back, back then, you know, they filled them out when they came in and all of that's taken care of. And if somebody does need to fill one out, I have a clipboard for them. So I just, yes, we do.
And just to give you a little insight on how long I've been here, we used to go over there for Christmas and Thanksgiving dinners and those desk, the desktop flips.
It's a...
That's part of the stains you're going to see as checking.
And a lot of the stains also on the carpet are, I mean, they have the desktop, they put their coffee there, and I mean, the carpet's stained. It doesn't look very inviting. And this is kind of like, I'm hoping, three times is the charm, because this is the third time we've asked for chairs. The last ones were when Anna was going here, but she wanted the flip, and they were like close to $50,000. And with this invoice, and we have 28 without the arms, 175 with the arms. And it comes in at $17,500.
How did you come up with that amount with and without arms? What?
Well, we have, we have some bigger chairs. Only ten. We only have ten that are oversized chairs. I think some people prefer arms, you know, to kind of lean this way and this way.
So the majority of them will have arms?
The majority of them will have arms. And then there are some will not, just for to get by and this, that, and the other, I think it's just going to be a personal preference. You know, they can see maybe arms, so give them kind of a little bit more option.
And Carrie, I know you told me, but can you tell the court how much money we have in the replacement here?
We currently have $65,000.
Do you have an outlet for these chairs if we approve the new ones?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an outlet for the chairs if we approve the new ones?
Probably send them all over to auction, I mean, I don't know if...
Any of them, any?
I don't know how well that works, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there are...
Not a lot of money.
There are...
So you have, outside of the three that you talked about, to get the bigger discount, there's about 43 chairs more than what you have today roughly. So around some of the numbers, are we getting a big, bigger jury pool? You mentioned you have about 160 chairs today, and then in this in this quote, there's over 200.
I need, I need at least 200. I have 160 chairs with desktops. And the roll chairs around, which are these. They, they sit around the table. And then also bring out fold-out chairs.
Okay.
The, I, I call anywhere between 50, usually between 60 to 200 people a week, just to... So in in saying that, you know, extra people will show up, maybe they didn't turn in their summons, this, that, or the other. So I can have an overflow. 200, or I think our capacity is 236 in the jury room. But 200 would replace all the rolling chairs, the fold-out chairs that we're using, and all the desktops. And throughout the years, those desktops have been broken, like guys would come again, and we have not replaced those, we just bring out folding chairs.
Okay. What's the turnaround if you we do this today, when can you get them?
I think she said that they need because we're not having any fabric on any of the chairs. I think she said three to four weeks on those. And then once we clear it out, we like to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You come with it, we all get carts for those that can fit on, or we can't move them around to clean the cart? That's the big issue about the cart, it's still hard to move the big chairs.
Yes. They do have these carts that we can purchase, I didn't bring them today, and I thought about that Friday, but I didn't have time to. But that you can purchase the, it's just like a cart, and I think it holds like 50 or 60 chairs. And yeah, so we have a lot of functions in there, like the attorneys will come in there and like the newbie attorneys, they have a big thing.
That explains the stains.
That's it. However, we did eat all their leftover food.
It looks like you got, obviously you cast the order of a lifetime warranty. What's the, what's the definition of a lifetime warranty?
Well, it's it's, I would say it's not really a lifetime warranty, it's it's like getting limited or depending on what's wrong with it, like if the only fall off, that will be replaced. Wear and tear, no, but that's why we went with this type is can hold up to 300 pounds. And there's no stains, there's nothing unless, you know, the bills fall off. Well, no, we're not getting them unless the legs bend or something, pretty much, I'm hoping. We've had these chairs for 30 years, so.
All right, I would make a motion, if court feels like they're ready for that. I'd make a motion to approve the placing 203 chairs in the amount of $17,588.83 funds to come for repair and replacement.
My motion is second on favor of the right hand.
Just as a, just as a matter of one question, Chris, as you leave, you may have mentioned this, but although 200 new chairs, how many of them are oversized?
Ten.
I mean, you have two.
No, we will have 203 like this. We purchased last year or the year before a dozen oversized chairs. And that's why we're getting 20, well, 28 now without arms to accommodate those. I mean, there's people who are at walkers or oxygen and stuff like that, not just just easy in the back there for them. So that'd be three.
Thank you, Mary.
I'd like to so much. I'd like to mention just, usually a Hon order standard is six to eight weeks, so this is a Hon, but it is plenty of stains. So just again, we have, it's going to take about six, eight weeks probably is what I'm... I thought she told me four, but that could...
That would be great.
Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much. All right, number eight, ban on restricted fireworks. To consider for approval in order banning restricted fireworks in unincorporated areas of Potter County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The longer cars and K B P I, the drought index of five seventy-five. I just looked at Texas Board Service at Potter County, it says the average is five to six hundred. But they also have a map that shows what counties are averaging above five seventy-five and we're not in it. There's nobody very close to us that's in it.
And what does that mean? What does that mean?
That's why I would do Ted.
I know, I'll look at it too and he's.
I would recommend that the court, if the, in the event the drought index does fall within five seventy-five, the court recommend authorize. She already had it in there, right?
No, this is only fireworks.
This is solely fireworks. And this is just fireworks that she, like sticks and bins.
Sticks and bins. Sticks like on a rock.
In the city, they're not allowing it.
There's a city ordinance that they can't, they can't even carry fireworks, you can't even have in your car, they come into the city.
I wish you could be my neighbor and listen to that, that not take place.
Yeah. You might sit up on the outside and watch while we're waiting on grass fires sometimes, you do that and oh yeah, there's some pretty displays going on.
Really nice, you sit out there and watch and listen.
Right, I make a motion that we approve an order banning restricted fireworks in unincorporated areas of Potter County.
I have a motion in a second, on favor. Okay, so this is in the event, did I get gospel up there?
Above.
Above, I mean, above the K G B?
And we'll watch it.
K B D.
So K, there you go, K B D I.
Okay.
It's two names in this drought, isn't it?
Okay, I'm going to hang on to this and when you, when it does, somebody call me, I will sign it.
I know you've told us before, but what is the name of that?
Curry?
Keach.
I'm always going to remember the name.
A Keach, it's Keach Fire Drought Index, yes. And the Forest Service updates it almost daily on what it is. Right now, the closest county that's over five seventy-five is far South Loop. Looks like down South Olympic somewhere, Wood County on their map. But we're in the five to six hundred range here. The fires were working, our conditions are just very dry right now. We worked one Friday, we rattled one and we ran out of water before the trucks got there, we were out putting it out by hand. And I almost felt like after I was done that I would put it out, I'd put out an area that I'd step out of to go to another area. And I look back and I think where I stepped out, I said, it's just like, we have an unincorporated area.
Number nine, burn ban, to consider for approval in order banning outdoor burning in unincorporated areas of Potter County. This last on May the twenty-fourth or something.
Yes.
We just need to renew.
Yes.
There's some people here that want to speak on fireworks. Oh, I'm sorry, I was questioning. Absolutely. This is only outlet with sticks and bins, it's not a total.
No, just sticks and bins.
Total sticks and bins. Thank you very much.
And sky rockets with sticks, I don't know if that adds to this.
The fireworks folks understand pretty well what the restrictions are on it. And I know in many years they've said it doesn't matter to us a lot, because we're not going to sell many.
Well, you probably don't even buy it, you just sell it, smart. Okay, so I need a motion on this number nine.
I move we approve that order banning restricted fireworks, that's what I said. Banning outdoor burning in unincorporated areas of Potter County.
What did you get on that, Steph?
I hear you.
I have a motion in second in favor, Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number ten, auction of county property to authorize auction of approximately one hundred and fifty gambling devices previously quarantined or banned.
Okay, it looks like we're going to do this every six months. I think Chad and I talked about doing an auction every six months for different ones, is that correct, Chad? This is just the first, but we've got about a hundred and fifty. From my understanding, they like to build in groups because the way we advertise and get them out there, it's not cost effective in all the ones. So they like to do them grouped, plus this is a lot. So from my understanding, we're going to have three more of these, we'll take each one of them, or is this going to, is this going to take care of every time there's an event?
Yes, we present before we're ready to go out.
So they are currently still housing that Yolken next door to Sixth Street.
Yes.
How many are in there?
We can't tell you.
And that's for four auctions, one hundred and fifty. Well, yeah, that's a good amount.
And we're not collecting anymore, correct?
We aren't, for a city member rolls.
City members always do that.
We're not, so they're not housing you.
No, no, they have their own mechanism.
I was directed to do auctions to get out.
Yeah, the long story short, to sell them all at the same time at the present price, we get back on.
Here's, here's my, here's my question, this is probably stupid to ask this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. If you auction these off, they're illegal, I mean.
They're not.
The machines aren't illegal.
Right.
But how do we know?
We typically try to sell people from out of state and we have a mark.
Taken out of state?
I'm not going to say how we have a mark, we don't know if they come back to the county. And we contract, we include in our contractual paperwork, if we sell, they will not bring them back to Potter County. Or use them illegally in the state of Texas, they protect some other state.
Now Scott, do you trust the people?
Uh, sure. That's why we have such a big paperwork, we sell them.
And the resources we have to actually monitor and not those actually coming back are totally limited.
Why don't we just destroy them?
Because it's expensive to destroy them, they contain a lot of things that T C E Q won't let us take out to the dump. Mercury, silica, so we have to go through a firm that comes in and takes them apart. And then basically what those firms do is reassemble and sell them, just like.
We should do what the Armstrong County Judge does, who just takes them out and shoots them.
Yeah, we have Cannon, we have these.
Where do funds go for the auction?
General.
General.
And how much could we, I think we'd buy about, just a ballpark.
I'd say under a thousand.
Yep.
Enough to house them throughout the year.
Well, and part of that is we go in to help him pay some prosecutors and things like that.
I make a motion that we authorize the auction of approximately one hundred and fifty gambling devices previously quarantined or abandoned in Potter County.
Sir.
Right, number eleven, vacate portion of rest and prices in church. Consider for approval a request to vacate an unused portion of rest and prices in church.
There's a little more work needs to be done, so I would request.
Is this going to be enough?
Yes, we got, so the digital is wanting my voters to that.
Okay.
So it should be ready next meeting, it's not, it's not, that's sort of the first purpose.
All right, number twelve, insurance items to your report on insurance payments for the period July one, twenty eighteen to June thirty, twenty nineteen. From insurance agents, the record has to report in on the payment.
Ms. Lynn, hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. I understand you haven't had much time to look at this, so I'll go over it in a little more detail than usual. The first page you have in front of you is the premium summary totals. Is that it? We got a very good renewal from tax, each of all tax policies except for the prime policy and the environmental policy from Nautilus. But the premium increase from three hundred and thirty-seven last year to three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, this year twenty-one thousand dollar increase over last year. But the rates are very nominally increased one point four, one point five percent. The rest of the increases are due to our growth, primarily the property premium was fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars of that increase. And our property values are up over fifteen million dollars primarily due to the sheriff's son, the sheriff's son, so. And I've got more detail in here on that as we go through it, but that summarizes the premiums. If you would turn to page four. This gives you a premium basis summary review and the basis is what the premiums based on. And on each, each section, we've had some growth. For example, our total employees grew from six seventy-seven to seven hundred and one. Volunteer totals gone from eighty-six to ninety-seven, law enforcement two sixty-four to two seventy-two. Vehicles, we only grew by one, that's a one additional vehicle. We had a lot of movement getting rid of older vehicles, getting newer vehicles. But our property values, like I said, is mainly, it went from a hundred and forty-one million to a hundred and fifty-six. The only thing that went down was our tank pollution liability and we had, we reduced our number of tanks from forty-one.
Where is that, the tank?
That's the district, the district quarters. And then we're evaluating the line that Sebastian's taking, so please be happy.
Since property is our, is our biggest issue, I want to give you a little bit of comparison. We are at a seven cent rate, that's seven cents per hundred dollars of value. And to give you another public entity that's a public record is N R L I S D. They're at a nineteen cent rate. They have a billion dollars of property, so the more property you have, usually the lower your rate should be. They're at a nineteen cent rate, they had to build a five hundred million dollar loss in about fifteen, with fifteen different companies sharing the total share. They have a hundred thousand dollar deductible with a two percent wind tail, which that two percent wind tail translates into twenty million dollar wind tail deductible. Potter County has a seven cent rate with a twenty-five thousand dollar cross board deductible including wind tail. So it's just, it's just incredibly good premium. And the fifth page you have is our loss summary, which we take three point three three dollars in total losses, so. Just we're, we're, we're all a hit in that category, so.
Do we need to approve the renewal? Okay.
Renewal is July one, June, June thirtieth of nineteen.
Can we do that with the way you did the identity search, to recognize family test, can we?
I'm staying.
Should you just to?
Oh, for the same.
Can we get some?
So that's, that's the one. Move to approve the report, approve the report and approve the table of invoices. The two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, on favor, Rachel. Number thirteen, employment items to consider, now the model employment items, Road and Bridge Department. Transfer of Cody Table from maintenance mechanic to maintenance mechanic Welder as replacement for Josh Redd effective June four to eighteen. Transfer of Weston McNabb from Southern Ward to maintenance mechanic as replacement of Cody Table effective June four. And the new employment of William Gene Delfield as the Southern Ward as replacement for Weston McNabb effective June four.
I move we approve the employment items as presented.
I have a motion in second, on favor, Rachel. Potter County Project, what?
Regarding the law enforcement center, y'all approved a million dollar request this morning. They're right there, they're getting down to the project out there. They anticipate at the end of the year, hopefully have everything completed. We, one of our ready typically came in with a bunch list prior to their last statement, y'all said they would request this rate because our contract with the architects, as I have, he comes back one more time for that particular project. Anything beyond that, Lester Wills is going to have to be architects again, so that's why they're going to do this. The warranty claim, that one aid that I presented to you regarding the hydronic systems out there, the flush and the cleaning, the water flow, they completed that last week. That's all I know, I was out of town, so we'll be checking on that. The downtown sheriff, the old sheriff again, will start demolition July ninth through August the twelfth. Today we have our landscaping pre-bid walkthrough, to develop in the streets. Something I wanted to make the court aware about as far as projects on the facility maintenance side. I take full blame for what's happened to some of the equipment within this building through the years. I've understood some of our employee maintenance have not been doing it properly. Basically, we're going to change this here recently, we've been found out a lot of stuff. I'll reassure you, the way we have our building prepared, it's probably doing all that away this year because district courts, for example, had a lot of problems, we had over there, supply fans, turn fans that supply T A C D that go. Had motors locked up for three or four years. We started investigating and we come back down this lot, so we're finding a lot of stuff like that. We spend a lot of money here, probably between now and the end of the year. In order to, I'd rather spend it now this year than budget instead of increasing next year.
My question on the demolition, the July ninth date, are you going to require any streets to be blocked off to support the demolition?
We leave that up to the contractors, we got the main fair repairs through Sixth Street and this, we had a pre demolition team last week. They are not requiring street closures, they'll probably come in all of Paris, come through, load that and come and hit one way. We leave that all up to you. It starts three days, it starts July the ninth through August.
It might be worth a courtesy phone call to Jerry at the city, just because I'm imagining the equipment to demolitions, for the demo to happen and everything to be, we're looking for the property. Just of how close it is to some lane closures. I know he's certainly taking time to come speak to the court on different things, it probably would be nice to, just so he had the dates and know that that's happening.
Thanks, honey. In the jail report, we have five hundred and seventy-four individuals in our jail. One hundred and two of those are female, ten of those are children. We have eighty-five percent felons, nine percent misdemeanor cases. And we have no class C people in our jail.
We have eighty-five percent felons, nine percent misdemeanor cases, and we have no class C people in our jail. Sheriff, is that normal? Or is that something that shouldn't be happening, we should not ever have a class C in our jail?
There isn't one or two.
Is there?
Oh, yeah.
We don't have any, yay.
How much consistency, uh, sheriff, have we, uh, having as far as, uh, the farming out of, uh, female employees, or employees with children lately?
Not as boys.
I mean, I'm sorry. That was, that was farming straight. Uh, but no, I, I, how much, uh, over the course of the last, uh, month or so, have we been, uh, farming those out to children, has it been, has it been pretty?
So they've been out there for about three weeks, we had some that were in Carson County, but we brought them back, they were males.
These two are females.
Definitely.
We have, we have ninety-two in our, in our place, all we got, we only got ninety-six.
Okay. Number sixteen, county insurance action.
No, we do not.
Do the obvious for next round, and come up. Just a reminder, we have a payroll for on the cartoon, but now we have. Anything else? Nothing else, you all.